Good evening. It is six o'clock in Portola and time for the regular meeting of the Portola City Council on February twenty second, twenty twenty-three. First item on our agenda is called order, including the pledge of allegiance and brawl call. Please join the council in making the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the small with the protein and justice for all.
But please call the roll.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Morton.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Powers.
Here.
And Mayor Tom Cooley.
Here.
And Councilmember Tyler is not present.
Forum is established. Item number two, public comments section intended to provide members of the public with an opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda. Do we see any public comment from the Zoom audience?
I am not seeing any right now.
And there is none from the chambers. We will move on to closing public comment to city communications. City Council Communications. Councilmember Turner, would you like to offer any communications?
I have none to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Morton.
Yes, I attended the Beckford Fire Department meeting last Wednesday night. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Powers.
I have a few things. I continue working with a group of former wildland firefighters and managers to improve the fire facilities at Merino Airport. We have sent a letter to Congress member Kylie inviting him or his staff to look at our proposal for increased capacity in stationing the fixed wing initial attack aircraft there. I had contact with representative of the administrator of the courts about release of the abandoned courthouse here. The AOC is now interested in handing it over to an agency or others in a mandated succession of priority. And the process could happen as soon as this summer of twenty-three. And I believe this is the fourth time we've requested to have something done with the abandoned facility, but this time it came from them toward us and saying, we're trying to get rid of our old buildings around the state. And I wondered if anyone up there is interested.
Can I ask a question, Bill?
Certainly.
Are we looking to maybe move City Hall there?
That's one possibility, yeah. And then the last item I have is LAFCO met a week ago Monday here in chambers. Our actions, changes and amendments, I'm sorry, can't talk, and amendments to the sphere of influence of Eastern Plumas Rural Fire Protection District, a review of their municipal service review, and comments from two members of their board of directors. Also on that agenda was to terminate Plumas LAFCO's contract with Calpers, which may lower the cost of operations for LAFCO. In addition, we're again advertising to recruit a public member to the board after the untimely passing of a board member alternative, Terry Swatter. And the final action item was our executive officer's evaluation, which she passed with very high marks. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I participated in the Beckford Fire Department Board Meeting a week ago. And also in the LAFCO meeting and with the same details that Councilmember Powers has just offered, so I'm not going to duplicate that. Do we have any committee reports? Item B. Staff communications, a fire report.
No staff communications. I don't see that there's anyone here that would be doing a fire report and probably the same thing with Sheriff. So I think Mickey might be the only one.
Okay, Mickey, would you like to give us an air quality report tonight?
Hey, everyone. Yeah, not too much to report tonight. We have confirmed that we're going to do our wood stove event this April twenty-second at the Veterans Hall as usual. So it'll be very similar to past events where we have vendors, installers, different organizations coming together to talk about the benefits of changing out your wood stove and potentially moving into mini split heat pump. So that is on Earth Day, April twenty-second. And if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to the Air District.
Thank you, Mickey. Item C, city manager report.
I don't actually have anything to additionally report other than the contents of this this week's agenda, so.
Okay, so we will come to things one by one. What's going on at City Hall? I'm going to item number four. Close session pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, dot six. It's a conference with labor negotiators, city representatives Leah Turner and Tom Cooley, and unrepresented employee interim city manager. I'm not able to give you a specific time that we will be returning, but I think I would am safe in saying that it will not be too long. And when I say that, I'm thinking in the ten fifteen minute time range. So we'll, John, can you organize the breakout room and?
Yes, and like like always, since we don't do these often, just bear with me through the clunkiness of creating this room. And then hopefully we will, and Steve Gross has his hand up. Let's see what he has to say. Steve, did you have something or was that just a twitch? Okay, well, I'll continue with the breakout room.
Steve's hand is back up again.
John, on the second item on your right hand display there, Steve Gross's hand is up on that. I don't know if that's his phone, might be.
Steve, are you want to say something before we go into the call close session? Are you on mute? Oh. You can call for public comment prior to us going into the closed session.
Okay, sorry, I failed to do that. Is there any public comment on item number four? The closed session pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, dot six. Calling for that before we create the closed session.
Okay, I'm seeing none, so I'm gonna continue with trying to create the closed session.
Now we are back in regular session. And there is no reportable action from the closed session that we just pursued. Okay, next item on the agenda is number five, resolution number two, five, four, one concerning COVID remote meetings. John, you want to introduce the subject?
Yeah, this is probably our last time we'll have to do this. It's the same procedural item we have to do to appease the state to continue having meetings in this fashion. And our next agenda item is probably to talk about how we're not going to do this anymore. So this just needs another approval for us to to actually make this actual meeting comply with with the COVID restrictions.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on item number five?
I don't see any.
Seeing none, any discussion from the council members?
Well, John answered my question.
There's a hand was just raised by Chris Spencer.
Okay, let's ask her to share her public comment.
And I'm asking Chris to unmute. Maybe.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So it looks like everybody was automatically on mute, so that I just wanted you to know that when you were asking for public comments.
Okay, the first step would be to raise your hand. And if you raise that little yellow glove, then we'll address you immediately.
Okay, now I, my apologies.
That's fine. No, that's, yeah, that's fine. Is there any other public comment or question about the operation of the meetings? Okay. We've asked for remarks from the members of council and heard those.
Well, I have a question. I wanted to know why we had to adopt this resolution again, but I think John answered my question that this could be the way we are today. We have to.
Yeah, it's an every thirty day cycle. Today fell into another.
Well, because the way it reads on here, it was to be until March tenth, but the.
And we just did that.
Because.
You never know, the governor might come up with something new next week. So anyway.
This is true.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Also move that we adopt resolution two, five, four, two.
Motion by Powers. Is there a second?
Yeah, it was resolution two, five, four, one.
It is.
Yeah, item five.
Okay, look right at it and said the wrong thing. Okay, two, five, four, one.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
Okay, we have a first and a second roll call vote. Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powers.
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley.
Yes, the motion carries. Item number six on our agenda, future meetings and the Brown Act. Once again, John.
Okay, well, this is, this particular item, Steve Gross is going to chime in mostly, and he's going to give us some options. I'll do kind of an intro. Really what we're probably going to be addressing through Steve is what's allowed now for council members to join. Well, allowed now as in tomorrow forward. Now we know how it is. The old Brown Act rules, if a council member wanted to join from afar, they had to actually join from a approved spot that had to be noticed there. During COVID, it's been sort of loosey goosey. You can you can just join from your house from anywhere and there's no no restrictions regarding the the place that you're going to join from. Steve is probably going to go over some of the options going forward. It's going to be probably similar to the old rules. I'm going to guess that the council is probably going to, after listening, probably lean toward sort of doing it the same way we used to do before COVID. And as for the public, that's a sort of a different topic, but Steve will discuss that as well. So we might as well let Steve in. And I'm gonna ask.
I think I'm still here. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, good.
Hey, you ready for me then?
Are we ready for Steve?
Yes, yes, we are.
Are you? Are you able to talk in your phone a little closer or? That sounded good.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, good. So thank you. There I do have a memo that's in the meeting packet for you. As as John explained, and as you are aware from the last agenda item, the the Brown Act world is about to change. We've been conducting remote telephonic meetings for nearly the past couple of years under what we've called very relaxed standards for or rules for participation of the elected officials or committee members of it's a standing committee. And we've been conducting those under the law that we refer to as AB three sixty-one. And that essentially amended the Brown Act to allow the remote telephonic participation without complying with some of the older traditional rules. For example, we did not have to identify each remote location for the council members on the agenda. We didn't have to post the agendas at that location. We didn't have to allow the public to attend from each of those remote locations and to provide public comment. And so those those were were very relaxed rules. However, they only can be utilized while there is a state of emergency in effect that has been proclaimed by the governor. So it would not be sufficient if the city proclaimed its own state of emergency. We we that that wouldn't qualify under the law. So AB three sixty-one is in effect until the end of twenty twenty-three. However, because the governor has stated his intent to terminate the the state of emergency as of February twenty-eight, so just you know, a week or so from now, in effect, we won't be able to to utilize the provisions of AB three sixty-one. So what are we left with? We are left with what I've referred to in my memo as our traditional teleconferencing rules. These rules have been around substantially in the form they're in today for about thirty-five years or so. And and they would allow a council member to attend remotely, provided that we identify the council member's location on the agenda. That agenda is posted at that remote location with the same amount of time that we would be required to post it elsewhere. In other words, seventy-two hours in advance of a regular meeting and twenty-four hours in advance of a special meeting. That each teleconference location would have to be accessible to the public. And the public would have to be able to fully participate at that location. In other words, what you really need is a speakerphone there so that that the the public can hear the meeting and also make public comment from that location. At least a quorum of the of the council would have to participate from locations, you know, within the boundaries of the city. So if you were out at a score meeting or or some other location outside the city, we couldn't have more than two of you away from or outside of the city. And of course, we have to have all votes by roll call. So those rules are still in effect. And we're able to utilize those. I do appreciate that sometimes some of the rules are easier said than they are to comply with, you know, such as posting the agenda at a remote location where you're going to be and trying to figure out how you how you get that accomplished. So sounds easy, but it's not always so easy. So that's that's one option that we have. The second option, and these are for teleconferencing rules, are are new rules under legislation that took effect this year and is in effect for two years. And it's, we refer to it as AB two, four, four, nine. Okay, and this allows, this provides a little flexibility for a council member to participate remotely without us having put the location of the remote, the remote location on the agenda or posting the agenda at that remote location or allowing the public to attend from that remote location. Okay, under this, under this law, however, the council member could only participate from remote locations under these rules with if they have just cause or an emergency circumstances. And so just cause is limited to one or more of the following. You have to provide childcare or care for or a parent, grandparent, grandchild, domestic partner, and that care would require you to participate remotely. The council member has a contagious illness that would prevent him or her from attending in person. The council member would have a need related to a physical or mental disability to participate remotely. Or you have a need to travel on official business of the city or another state or local agency. So if, for example, you were employed by another local agency or the state, you had to travel on on business for that entity and you had to be away and participate remotely, you could do that. And emergency circumstances, that's the other condition that you're allowed to attend remotely for. It means a physical or family medical emergency that would prevent you from attending in person. So some of these rules are, though, that if you're going to participate remotely, you have to disclose at the meeting before any action is taken whether there are any individuals eighteen years of older that are present with you at that remote location and the general nature of the member's relationship with that person. I didn't make up these rules. I'm just telling you what they are. We have to have both a telephonic and a visual electronic means for the member to participate in the meeting. In other words, via Zoom, that allows for both an electronic visual participation and telephonic communication. And what this law requires is the member to participate through both of those technologies. So if you just tested for COVID and you are rundown and feeling like a train just ran over you and look like a train just ran over you and you want to participate in the meeting, but you really don't want to be on the screen, well, then you shouldn't and you can't participate because you have to you have to comply with both of those. There are limitations on how many, on how often you can do this. You can only use these remote teleconference provisions for up to twenty percent of the meetings in a year or three consecutive months. So there are limitations. It can't just be a regular practice. And and there's some question in my mind and mind of other public attorneys, whether or not a physical, a disability, not physical, a physical or mental disability that would prevent you from attending and require accommodation, if that would be some grounds for allowing the the council member to exceed that twenty percent or three consecutive months of meetings. It's unclear in the law right now. Let's see, what else? If there is a disruption during the meeting that either prevents the city from broadcasting the meeting to the public via telephone and or electronically, for example, through Zoom, or a disruption that prevents a member of the public from making public comment during the meeting, then we are not allowed to take any further action at that meeting unless or until that disruption has been resolved. So in many cases, what that might mean is we simply have to terminate the meeting or adjourn the meeting and readjourn to a later time or call for a special meeting or wait for the next regular meeting to take any action. Those are, those are the essential rules of the road. Now, the and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about this. The the question or the the decision that staff is asking the council to provide direction on is how would you like to conduct meetings in the future? Okay, one, we can simply return to in-person meetings and not provide telephonic or video access to the meetings, just as it as it's been since the city was incorporated and the Brown Act came into place. That would require the council members to attend in person and members of the public who wanted to attend and observe and make comment to attend in person. Now, if we did that and we did not have a telephone and or audio and audio options to attend for the public to attend, then if at the last minute there was an emergency or some justification that would otherwise allow a council member to utilize AB two, four, four, nine and say, hey, I'm just tested positive. I can't come in. I'd like to attend the meeting. I want to participate under these these rules. If we don't, if we haven't identified on our agenda a telephonic access and a visual electronic access, then the then the council member would not be able to participate at that meeting. Okay, so that's that's one of the consequences of of conducting the in-person only meeting. Another option is to, at the far end of the spectrum, is to conduct every meeting with telephonic and visual access that is published on the agenda. And that would allow last minute council members to attend meetings remotely. If they qualify and they haven't exceeded the allowable number, either total or consecutively per month. The third option would be to conduct in-person meetings and provide access to the meetings via telephone and and or visually, for example, through Zoom, but make it clear to the public that access and participation in the meeting via telephone or electronic visual platform is not guaranteed. In other words, we're not conducting the meeting pursuant to AB two, four, four, nine. So if you really want to be certain to be able to observe and participate in the meeting, then you should attend in person. And this is a hybrid, what I'm calling a hybrid form of meeting that that many of my clients are opting for. One of the challenges that we're facing now is how we draft language for the agenda to make it clear to the public that if if they want to be certain to be able to participate, that they need to to show up in person. However, a lot of, you know, a lot of the agencies like the ability to take advantage of technology and provide greater access to the public, but don't want to be sort of hamstrung if there is a disruption to the meeting that would force them to stop. And and these happen. It happened at a meeting last Friday that I was at. We had a disruption. We weren't conducting the meeting pursuant to AB two, four, four, nine. But if we were, we would have had to stop. So so they do happen. And you know, the the other, the other comments I frequently hear with respect to AB two, four, four, nine and the ability to only participate in the event. With respect to A B two four four nine and the ability to only participate in the event. Uh of an emergency uh or just causes. You know, if you're so sick that you can't attend or you really need to give your attention to a child, a parent. A spouse, a domestic partner. Then give your attention to yourself or that person and don't don't try to multitask and be on a meeting. Anyway, so I'll I'll stop there. Uh be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, are there questions from council?
Um I don't have any questions, but I have a comment.
Sure.
Um I personally feel that we should just go back to the normal way of doing our meetings. Um and I'll tell you why. Um I've done some research, I've reached out to our infectious control nurse up at the hospital. And um not even the CDC requires social distancing as of October last of this of twenty twenty-two. So to me, the social distancing issue is a moot point. Um COVID is here to stay, it's not going away, people are getting it, they're they're living now. It's not as severe as it was when we first started, so I would think we should just go back to normal meetings myself.
And I, my comment will be, uh certainly we want to open it back up, it's time to do that. Uh to the in-person meetings. Um I do think we'll get a fair number of people who. Um for what, for their own personal reasons, would rather participate via Zoom. Um. They're elderly, they don't like to go out at night, uh don't like to drive at night and so forth. So a lot of people. We might get a bigger attendance audience at meetings if we do what are the, like the hybrid. Uh model, that's kind of where I'm reading.
Do we have a possi- do we have the possibility of being able to offer uh visual and audio meetings?
When you guys are ready, I'll address stuff.
Okay, well, let's do that. I was coming to ask you for your your thoughts on it.
Okay, um. I think. Oh, I'll set my opinions aside. Um I'll just address what your your concerns are, the council. Um. So for instance, if we, if let's assume tonight was one of those meetings that it was only in person. Um we have staff members like Steve, who with the night tonight, it's way better for him to have joined. There instead of traveling over from Truckee. And actually, even when the weather's poor, the city can save money when they join from home and not travel over here. So that's that's a financial. Topic. So I obviously put some thought into this. I love old-fashioned meetings where everyone's in the same spot. But contrary to what some people believe, I have spent. A little over a decade, tens of thousands of dollars and lots of hours trying to increase civic engagement. I love civic engagement. I like more people involved. Whether they agree with you or disagree. I believe we can. Do some sort of a hybrid where we still have the launch, we we still have the Zoom available. For staff to join, for public members to join in. I'm even, I'm hesitating to say this, but I'm even saying we might still be able to allow public comments via Zoom. Until it gets so clunky and and very difficult to manage, but because we don't legally. Because we don't legally have to. I think someone's not muted, Steve, let's do uh. Because we don't legally have to accept or sub public comments. If we're in person and we're just having access via Zoom. Um I think we have the flexibility to make a decision on the fly if it's difficult to manage with the whole group. And people on Zoom. So like Steve mentioned, we we probably need to. Craft good enough language, assuming everyone reads it in the agendas to describe that you can still join by Zoom. But your participation through public comment is not guaranteed. And maybe that's just a flexible thing for the council. Um I I I. Again, I I like the fact that more people can join. Virtually, always wanted that before COVID, you know, uh COVID forced us to figure this out, I guess. So I think we can manage by still having public meetings and still opening up to Zoom, but we may not be able to be so restricted. Um with allowing too many public comments, but we can certainly try. I think we can manage this. Um and it still allows for more people to show up. We'll just have to play that.
John.
Yeah, Steve, yes.
I'm I'm sorry, I I didn't want to interrupt you. I just, I wanted to add another comment. Uh that I really should have added in my presentation and I I didn't. Um in case it's not clear, even under A B two four four nine. Uh where we have um uh electronic and telephonic access to the meeting. We are still required to have our meeting in a physical location that is open to the public.
Yes.
So so you you know, uh under any of these rules or scenarios. Uh we will still have to have a meeting at City Hall or wherever we meet. That will be open to the public and the public will be able to uh come and attend and and make a public comment.
Yeah, I think I think everyone understood that. We're just, I think, decision to have the hybrid, to have the additional virtual. Uh option, right, council?
Correct.
Yes, that was my. That was my impression. And let me uh call now for public comment on this uh. Item number seven, uh or six, rather, future meetings and the Brown Act, which is what we've been discussing here for the last twenty minutes, perhaps.
It looks like Mickey had her hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, I am just really excited from a, as a resident, um to get back to in-person meetings. I think that will be effective. I, so I'm highly in favor of option one as well as. Option three, um if that can be coordinated um in an organized manner. But um yeah, I'm just really looking forward to getting back to in-person and working out the kinks and um. Emergencies and whatever that takes to to get everyone together. So um thank you for sharing that and I'm excited.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
There was. Looks like this, you, looks like Lindsay had her hand up.
Thank you. Um I love the idea of both having in-person and remote uh for a couple of reasons. Accessibility, holding a meeting both remotely and in-person allows for greater accessibility for community members to. John's point, uh increasing the number of people that can attend. Some individuals may have difficulty attending in-person meetings due to mobility issues, childcare responsibilities. Work schedules, I myself, I travel quite often overnight, so there's uh sometimes when I can't actually attend. In person, but I would love to still participate and the hybrid option allows for that. Convenience, providing a remote option for a city meeting can also be more convenient for attendees. Flexibility, holding a meeting for both remotely and in-person provides flexibility for attendees who need to switch between two options. Depending on their schedules or other commitments. Cost savings, John mentioned that already, so I don't want to go into that too much. Technology advancements. Technology has made things so much easier. Uh so with video conferencing tools like Zoom, um. Remote attendees can still participate in the meeting in real time and be able to provide their input like I'm doing right now. But most importantly, health and safety, uh in the wake of the COVID nineteen pandemic, despite any research that may be done. Um it's still important for us, uh even as the pandemic is subsiding or not as uh focused on. Um there are still maybe individuals who prefer to attend meetings remotely to minimize the risk of exposure. To infectious diseases or exposing others like myself. When I travel, I'm going to be on airplanes. I'm going to bring back anything and everything that I'm getting on these uh closed air circuits and I really don't want to cough on somebody. Um and last but not least, again, safety. Traveling is difficult in the snow with the black ice. We know that that uh little spot. Um just before City Hall is a little tricky where there's only a three-way stop. Uh some people don't recognize that, but it is usually iced over and I I typically will skid through. I'd love to see hybrid as the the main objective because I think that's going to satisfy both the people that want to. Remote as well as the people who want it in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another comment.
Looks like uh Ashley has a comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, I um I actually agree with Lindsay's comment. Um. I would like to participate in person and via Zoom. Um. It does allow for the public to participate in both places. Um and it does, you know, prevent some, I guess, congestion within the council meeting room. Um if there, you know, is. A lot of attendees, I think um having the Zoom option will clear that up and. Diseases and COVID and flu and stuff, you know, um people will not be exposed to that as much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I do have a clarifying question for Steve.
Yes.
If we're, Steve, I have a question for you. Um if the council decides to uh go back to open, like. We don't have a choice um for that, but also still allow. Uh like exactly what we're doing, participation, again, without the guarantee to anybody going for, without the guarantee of. Being able to participate remotely, but at least be able to join remotely. Do we have to have a camera to show video in that event? Because if so, that's going to take a financial investment from the council, because right now the only camera we have is on the laptop that looks at my face and that will just scare people away.
The answer is no. We are not, i- if we choose to have a hybrid and we're not trying to comply with A B two four four nine. Then then we can provide access uh via via telephone. And or visually, for example, via Zoom. Uh but we are required to have that uh open. Uh in-person meeting where the public can attend.
Thank you.
Steve, is that, is that only for the rest of this year up until twenty twenty-four or is that till twenty twenty-five?
This uh this hybrid type meeting that we're talking about. Uh we would be able to utilize this indefinitely under the law. So so we would be meeting pursuant to what I'll just call the traditional historic Brown Act. Um and where we're meeting in person and uh we're not precluded from providing other means of access. So as long as we're not trying to comply with A B two four four nine or to allow someone to attend. Remotely um without having identified their location on the agenda, et cetera. This, these provisions aren't uh scheduled to sunset. They're just part of the regular Brown, ongoing Brown Act that will continue.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, let's find out from the uh council members uh what their. Personal preference is and then we can find out what it is that we need to do to uh implement the the will of the body. Uh Bill?
Yeah, I I would, uh my personal view is the hybrid model seems to be. Uh in keeping with my my wishes and hopes for both teleconferencing remotely and.
Okay, Pat.
I agree. I mean, I want to see it opened up, but I think there are some people, especially older people. And uh like Susan and them who have to travel a long ways, it makes it much more easier for them to attend.
With a hybrid.
Um I'm in agreement with the hybrid. Um as long as, and now that it's been explained that we do not have to have video and audio. Um it, but we can still have people participate. Um I'm I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, and I agree as well. Now, what do we need to do to?
S- Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have to take any formal action as long as we proceed by the law going forward. However, if the council wants to. Take an action for the public to know that we're going to go to hybrid, I think that's up to you. Steve, is that accurate?
Yes.
I'm almost like ten for ten sometimes here. So it's up to the council if you need to take action or we just, there's an agreement that we're going to go forward with the hybrid.
And why don't we just do a. Take action on it so that in the future, they have to look back about when we. Started doing hybrid meetings, that there's some kind of a record.
I I agree with that. I'll I'll make a motion that we move, moving forward, we do both in-person and hybrid starting in March.
Yeah. Let's, let's think on that. Does, is that sufficient? Uh Steve?
I was going to suggest a a friendly amendment or or clarification that that. Um that the uh remote uh or telephonic uh hybrid piece. Uh be. Available, um but not guaranteed to be able to provide public comment. In other words, not A B two four four nine compliance.
So if Councilmember Turner amended her motion to say something like, uh we'd like to move the uh. To go in-person and a hybrid and the hybrid uh shall. Not guarantee participation, but allow for the public to join the meeting virtually.
Thank you, John. Yes.
That would work. I I know it's a a bit vague, but we've had good discussion.
We can clean up.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh we'll close discussion on that and ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powers.
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley.
Yes. Moving on to item seven on our agenda tonight, um. The consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. City Council acted upon them at one time in a discussion. Any council members, staff, member or interested party. They request that an item be removed and consent agenda for an excursion. Additional collective appropriations will require a forfeit's roll call vote. Is there anyone uh on the council who would like any uh item withdrawn? Any members of the public? See no. Indication of uh desire to withdraw any any items, uh the chair will accept a motion.
Make a motion that we approve, uh adopt resolution number twenty-five forty-two, authorizing payments. Approve the minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powers.
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley.
Yes.
Moving on to item number eight. This is a public hearing that will be part of this item agenda. And I am. Uh public hearing on resolution two five four three. John, will you provide a background on this?
Yes, this is the resolution. Uh we're, well. We originally intended to be the last agency to adopt this resolution uh to. Uh for the formation of a new fire district where the four agencies are involved, Beckwith Fire Protection District, Sierra Valley, Golden Mountain and the city of Porcola. Uh a legal notice was published uh January, I believe, nineteenth. Um for the original notification of the public hearings. Um this is our opportunity to have our public hearing regarding that particular topic. Um there were a few hiccups with a couple of the other agencies. Uh so they they didn't, although they had the item on their agenda, they had a public meeting. They took comment, but they didn't actually conduct the public hearing out of no fault. It's just, uh you know, things happen with. With smaller agencies, those those things just happen. So uh we republished the legal notice. starting last week. And those two agencies are going to have to do a redo and have a public hearing, but it shouldn't stall anything. So Gold Mountain is fine. They conducted their public hearing. We will be conducting our public hearing tonight. And then technically, there'll be a little busy work happening with LAFCO and the county in between, but it'll be official, official after Sierra Valley and Beckwith Fire does their meeting again with the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I'm preparing to open the public hearing on resolution number 2543. It is a resolution of application by the city of, the city council of the city of Portola, requesting the Plumas Local Agency Formation Commission, that's LAFCO, to initiate proceedings for the formation of a new fire protection district, reorganization of existing fire service providers in the affected territory. Public hearing is open, and we are open to hearing from the public. So please raise your yellow glove if you would like to speak.
Looks like Ashley is our first number.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Although I know that you will move forward with this project and this resolution irregardless of what I have to say, I would also like to, I would like to point out a few things. I noticed that major, I noticed that majority of the new district is forest service property. How much will this new fire district actually be responsible for? I also noticed that the Plan West document says that the city has three ongoing housing projects. I believe there are only two, and that Woodbridge, also known as Portola Highlands and Portola 192, both have been talked about for 20-plus years with no actual work being done on either. And it appears that they are not actually happening. So that makes me question the accuracy of this document provided by Plan West. The fire department in Portola was dissolved because of mismanagement by the city of Portola. The public does not trust you to handle this any better. I am also concerned how this project actually benefits the public. It appears that all you want is revenue. Where is the implementation plan for this reorganization? Taxes will increase significantly for, and for renters, that means rent increases as well. It is still going to be the same people operating it, and the MSR shows that they are, are all incapable of operating their smaller individual districts. There is not going to be anything different. Also, I noticed last week that the city of Portola, who is the lead agency, did not file the proper paperwork with SEQA. And I wanted to make sure that the city knows as well that that you can't just claim SEQA exemption. Can't self-reclaim it. You have to file the paperwork and stuff. I did speak with the people that are in charge of that. And then also, I believe you would need a public hearing regarding the SEQA portion as well. Especially because you plan on building classrooms, and I know that Beckwood plans on building a facility to house volunteers or staff. So I just wanted to bring that to light as well. Thank you for listening to my comments.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Any other public comment?
And just clarification, the SEQA actually happens after, we, we know this. And it can't happen first.
You ought to describe that process.
Yeah, Steve's probably a little better at the strategy, but the, the notice of exemption is, is already, it's, it's ready to be filed and go through the proper procedure, but it can't be done until all of the resolutions are adopted by the agencies. So, you know, we also know what needs to be done with SEQA.
John, if I, if I may, I, I may suggest that, that that the mayor accept all public comment, and then we close the public hearing and then address any specific issues that are raised or that the council wants us to cover.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
And I'd like to revisit the SEQA issue, but I think we ought to just get through the public hearing portion of it so that we can make sure we get all the public comment and close it and then discuss.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder, Steve. And it looks like we have a Chris Spencer.
If you ask him, I mute. It's a bird.
Yeah, Chris, I, I thought I did, Chris. I thought I asked to unmute you, but we'll give it another shot. Okay, we'll do it again. I think, Chris, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ask you to unmute, but there might be a button you're not hitting.
No?
No.
She's still muted.
I just changed our settings to allow the public to unmute themselves. I'm hoping for respect. And no one just chiming in, so we'll see if this helps.
You don't have her hand yet.
Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Lo and behold. Conquer your fears. Hey, so, yeah, I'm Chris Spencer, and I've been newly appointed to the Plumas County Planning Commissioner as a representative for District One. And that is why I'm interested in the fire district consolidation. To the previous individual's comment on the benefit to the public. My background is 40 years in healthcare, and I come actually from the Truckee area and work with those fire districts. As many of you may, may know, their challenges in consolidation or hybrid or how they have integrated to meet the demands of a hugely expanding population. So the benefit to the, the local community is that our needs exceed the depth of our skill set and resources. It, it won't be the same people doing the same thing redundantly and incompetently. The fire district leadership in the meetings I've been at have committed to recognizing their shortcomings and looking for individuals with skill sets that can indeed be successful. Like it or not, our area is growing. As I said, I've come from Truckee, and I know there's a lot of feelings about those of us moving out here from Truckee, but my apologies, but also I want to participate in a way that is beneficial to the, the community as a whole. I think one key component is while they're called fire districts, over 70% of the calls are medical calls. And that provides some depth of capacity when our ambulance responsibility, and I don't mean responsibility, but ability to respond is limited by resources also. So I, I think the public may not fully understand how much these fire districts do to overlap from the 911 call till someone's there till the next level of care can be provided. So I, I strongly support this. The, the key is that the community knows that they elect the board members to this new fire district and will, can hold them accountable. So it's not that a script has been written and it'll just go hither and yon, and there's no control. It really will be about community participating to make sure this fire district works as proposed. That's my comment.
Thank you. Korea comment. Any other comment or testimony for the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing. The hearing is closed. They're going to ask now for responses from the council members, observations, any further questions to legal counsel or staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I could address the SEQA question?
Steve wants to address the SEQA.
Okay, yes, please do that, Steve.
Okay, thank you. So the resolution, if adopted, would indeed make the finding that the project is exempt from SEQA under SEQA guideline 15320. It's in the, it's in the resolution itself in the meeting packet. And that is based on our belief or the city council's belief if it adopts a resolution, that it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the activity in question, i.e. the reorganization of fire and emergency medical services, would have a significant effect on the environment. Because this, this change in organization do not change the geographic area, which was where the, where these services were previously provided. And so, as I say, if you adopt the resolution, then you are making the SEQA finding, you are conducting your public hearing with respect to SEQA. And assuming that the other agencies adopt their similar resolutions, then my recommendation would be that immediately upon notification that the other agencies have approved, and of course, the council approving, that the notice, that a notice of determination be filed with the county, Plumas County, and posted on the city's website. And that is direction that is also provided in the resolution itself. So I appreciate Ms. Sims' comments about SEQA. We are cognizant of, of our requirement to address SEQA, and we are doing so through this public hearing this evening and consideration and possible adoption of the resolution.
We appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Stephen. John, do you have anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. Councilmember Powers?
No, I'm ready to move.
Okay. Councilmember Turner?
My comment is I agree with Chris Spencer that this board, this new department will have its own board. And that, and I'm confident that if there are citizens in those areas that are concerned that they need to run and they need to become a member of their board to try to alleviate some of the issues that all of these smaller departments are having. Also, what Chris Spencer said about EMS, most of your calls being EMS, I agree 100%. It's more like 85 to 90%. And recently, having seen that there have been back-to-back calls, it is a good idea to have well-trained EMR, EMTs responding to fill that gap until an ambulance can come. And in some cases, they come all the way from Quincy, which is 35 to 40 minutes away. So I, I think that this, this is a good idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Morton?
I agree that we should move forward with it. Because of the way things are changing, the lack of volunteers, and plus the training that we need to give them in order to do their jobs in a safe and effective way. So I vote to move forward.
Thank you. My personal position is to agree as well. Chair will entertain the motion for the adoption of resolution 2543.
I'll make a motion to approve adoption of resolution 2543.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further thoughts or discussion? If not, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Morton?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powers?
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley?
Yes. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda this evening, budget goals for 2023 and 2024. It will be discussion and planning of financial goals for our next budget year. We're going to ask Susan to lead this.
I'll, I'll probably just open it up. This is a, this is going to be probably a shorter agenda item than what it seems like it should be, because whenever the word budget comes out, that's a long conversation. This is really just budget goals, it's something that we did last year. We, the, the budget workshops will come later. There's a whole schedule of budget workshops and regarding the budget for the next few months. This is the time that if any of the council members are just thinking of some things that you would want to, out of, that's, that's out of the ordinary to possibly just bring up for possible discussion and, and maybe to, to have staff work on doing a little research. Hopefully, it's something that fits in our timeline. But, but I'll just, I'll just address some of the things that we, you know, in it, we're still working on making the city and the services we provide better and improving staff and improving processes. We are going to be addressing some retirements in the next couple of years. So we are going to be doing some succession planning, which might require some budget adjustments when it comes time to budget talk to, to talk about how we're going to, you know, possibly put some lead people that we already have here in places to manage different aspects of the city. There's just a long discussion, so that, that's going to require some discussion about moving, changing the budget a little bit. We also want to continue talking about the use of ARPA funds. We're going to still, the ARPA funds is what we used for our community cleanup last year. There are some other things that can be used with ARPA funds. We're not done with our community cleanup, although we put a big dent in it. Right now, you can't tell what has been cleaned and what hasn't, because there's three to five foot of snow on the garbage. We we have a potential purchase of property to take control of to hopefully address some housing issues for the city of Portola. So really, there's not a big discussion needed for this particular item. Susan might have something to say, and we'll let her chime in. But if we just have a brief moment of anyone on the council's opinions about something we want to talk about, this is the time to do it. Susan?
Yeah, I think that you hit on a lot of the things when it comes to what we're already working on. We have to, staff has to get INCODE finished. We're still working on that, and that is very time-consuming for such a small staff. Obviously, the consolidation of the fire department has been a big thing in the ARPA projects. You know, and so mostly we'll be working on our operating budget. And then when we get into the budget workshop, we can sit down and we can talk about whether there's any additional things that, that the council thinks we might add in. And John, did you give them the updated calendar?
I started to, and then we got technical difficulties, so I will have to hand that out later after the meeting.
Okay, well, the only change on the calendar, we're still looking at May 17th for the Okay, well, the only change on the calendar, we're still looking at May seventeenth for the. Council workshop. And then public hearing will be June fourteenth and adoption will be June twenty-eighth. So those are the only changes and that's because I did not look close enough at the calendar and I had down the seventh and the twenty-first. So, so those are not council days.
Well, what was the last date, Susan?
June twenty-eighth is the second meeting and, and we always do adoption before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Susan, that you, you mentioned that, those items that you presented to me today that weren't included in the, in the agenda packet. Even though we're going to hand it out after the meeting to everyone, I'll, I'll also upload that document to the website for it to be available to the public.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, John, just one more thing. As a reminder, and when people see the schedule that March twenty-second and April twelfth, there's still public comment on the budget process. And we're always happy if people want to chime in and tell us their, their. You know, goals and what they'd like to see. So those are the comment dates.
Sure.
I did have one thing that we don't know about yet. But as this city hall transition perhaps goes forward. If we do take possession of the courthouse or however that pans out. There might be a budget item there and then we have to do something. I have no idea yet. So we'll, we'll be able to address that in another, hopefully another week or two. I did put another call to this person from the AOC and we'll be discussing with them in the next week.
I have a suggestion for the new budget. I would like to put into motion, looking into putting a dog park up at Baldwin. Between the baseball field area and the bathrooms. And I did meet with Tom today, giving my rough draft of a sketch and some pictures that I. Got from the city of Bandon, their dog park.
And do you have a, do you have an idea of the budget we would need for that?
I do not, Susan. I need to look into fencing. Fencing is about the only expense that we're going to have. So I need to find out what it would cost for the poles, the fencing material, the gates that we'll need. I just haven't got into that, that part yet.
Pat, do you have anything you'd like to offer?
No.
Okay, nor do I at this point. Let's see, have we had any public comment on this? I don't believe that we have yet. We're now open for public comment from attendees by Zoom.
Giving people time to find the little button, but I don't see any public comment.
Okay, thank you. We've had our discussion on the budget goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Move on to item number ten, music in the park. Once again, Jen?
Councilmember, our, our mayor Pro Tem Powers?
Yes.
This is you.
Well, actually, I have a staff report.
Well, this is Susan. This is Susan. Then you.
Okay, fine.
That is true.
So just as a reminder that we do have nine thousand dollars in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We do not have money that was spent in the summer of twenty-two. There isn't money in the current budget for twenty twenty-three. That would be part of the budget process. But because bands need to be booked, we'd like the council's approval to put this in the next budget. You just won't be seeing it until we actually do the budget. We don't need a twenty-two, twenty-three amendment. It's going to be in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Right, yeah, the payout is not until after the fiscal year begins.
Right.
I got you. Thank you. So where we are and Jason, our assistant city clerk has, that's your title, right?
Deputy.
Deputy, sorry, assistant. Yeah, he, he keeps looking around for a city clerk to be assisting, but suddenly realizes it's him. So deputy city clerk and I have been coordinating. We have, I hope, five bands in agreement to participate. And what that means is we don't have, we've offered some dates that will be available. There are, there's one in June this year, which is a little different. It's before the July, Fourth of July. Conflict with ongoing conflicts and grain going elsewhere. So we offered up one Friday in June, three in July, and two or three in August. So yeah, I think that's it. I think we have seven available that we've offered available dates. With that not set in stone quite yet. Other actions we've, and then we've contacted five different bands and said they are willing to participate. That includes four bands that were here last year and one new band. This band comes from, I think they're actually based in Nevada City. But I was contacted by the promoter who puts together the Kentucky Mind Music Venue. And he and I have worked together before and have a good relationship. He sets up a table at the co-op each year and gets people to join them over at Kentucky Mind. Anyway, so Jason and I both listen to them. I think they're a real good audience. Participation band, actually. I think there, there's somebody people want to get up and dance and, and sing along with. They, they're called Dirt in My, Dust in My Pocket. And the head of their group is a working cowboy. That's his profession. And he sings and writes a lot of their own music anyway, without going into much more detail. We're continuing to work on it. I did contact the agent for Mumbo Gumbo. Who is a band that's been up and around here for years now and very popular. And they always bring an entourage. However, they're expensive. And probably too expensive for a current budget. But if we. We'll see how the other bands pan out and it's possible. No, well, I won't even go there. I think they're, they're probably.
Really?
See themselves out. But we have, they have to have accommodations for seven people as well. So we'd have to, I'd get a little place to stay. Whereas the other bands come from either vocal or come from Reno and they usually drive home if their car doesn't break down like a disaster. So anyway, we're excited. We are going to be much with Jason's help. We are going to be much more organized. We're going to get, thank you, Susan. Our contracts out in time, get everything signed, get our W9s signed. Everything will be in order. We are discussing having a bar again this year because that probably doubled our attendance from last year. So if that happens, that involves a bunch more coordination. And then other ideas that were brought up last year that were, were. Rejected last year because there was no time to prepare or plan for them. We had a, we had a food truck and she was wonderful. She wants to come back. She's going to wait until we've got our dates set to see if she can be there on those dates. And we are also in contact with the second food truck. But in addition to that, we had people ask last year if they could set up a booth. To do a variety of things. And that will be a point of discussion in the near future, I think. One was a religious organization. And I just asked them what, what they wanted to do and they said we want to hand out free water. And our information. Well, I hadn't planned for such a thing or offered it to everyone. So I just kindly, I hope, said, no, not this year. We'll discuss it for next year. We had another group come in that were a fundraising element. And they set up a table and I asked them in person, what you doing here? Because I didn't know they'd asked anybody, but they had. And they were going to sell the same things as our food truck. And they were going to run direct competition for them with, and I didn't have any time to plan or organize or advertise or anything. So I asked them to kind of rearrange what they were going to sell and what they weren't going to sell. The only other thing I think I have to mention at this point is that we did allow the Portola swim team. To have a candy booth. And they sold candy and some drinks and so forth. And that was okay with the food truck. And this was their second or third year here yet. So they're, they're in place and I'm pretty sure they're going to want to give it again.
So I, sorry to interrupt, but I think what we're trying to do is get the council's permission to continue on with all these big plans.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, that's where I was going, Susan. I was, I was going there.
All right. I would like to know what we've spent in the past, if I could, seeing as how this is my first year involved with this.
It's changed over the years. It went up last year because the price of bands went up. And the nine thousand dollars was the total expenditures for last year. And I don't think it came down to the penny. But we've spent it on, most, it's mostly bands, the sound system and advertising. In addition to our donation from the city council. Last year, we had a donation of five hundred dollars from Columbus Arts. So that was, I think, the only other source of income. Is that right, Susan?
Yes, it was right about eighty-five hundred last year, which would account for the five hundred dollars. So in the past, the annual fee, the annual that we would budget was about six thousand dollars. But as Mayor Pro Tem Powers said, all the costs of the bands went up pretty dramatically. And. That's why the nine thousand was the figure from last year. And, and we're looking for that kind of approval for the, for the summer of twenty-three.
And this money comes out of the general budget, correct?
Correct. Yes, it's general fund.
Yes, and it was. The other thing that cost a little more, and I, I thought. What the, the quality of music we got last year was very good. And what we can do to, just in case. They, well, they probably priced themselves out of the business if the, if the bands we had in the past asked for more. Because I, I think we stretched it about as far as we want to stretch it. Yeah, we could, we could keep it. We could cancel one concert, too. How many councils did we end up with last year? Seven? Let me count them. Six, six, I think. I thought it was six. I just wanted to be sure.
I think it's six.
Five for this year?
Six.
No, you're talking about maybe.
We're talking.
Six, seven, eight, nine, maybe. Yeah, we had those dates out. But that just means we can, according to their. We've got five bands already. Yeah. Booked. And probably may, maybe only one more. And then we'll, then we can lock into dates.
That's what I was just going to say. Six is what I'm counting as dates.
Okay.
So, so in the past, Susan, we've, we've allocated six thousand. But last year we had to do nine because of the cost of living and et cetera, et cetera.
The, the other cost to the bands and, and bands were that were booked.
Okay, let's call for public comment on this issue, the music in the park. Item number ten on the agenda.
Looks like Lindsay has a comment.
I'm excited for music in the park. I think that this is fantastic. I'd love to see more of these things. And I applaud your efforts to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on music in the park? Seeing none. Let's. Susan, do you want to describe again what you're looking for from the council in the way of guidance or motion?
I'm just looking for direction that the council, and if you want to make a motion, that'd be great. That the council agrees to fund the summer of twenty twenty-three. With, at this point, I think we should put a nine thousand dollar limit on it.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do a motion to include that. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make your motion to. Put nine thousand dollars towards music in the park for the summer of twenty twenty-three.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any other comments from council?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Morton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers?
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving to item number eleven, employment agreement for interim city manager. Consideration of approving an employment agreement with the interim city manager and authorizing the mayor to execute it on behalf of the city. Also, you who have downloaded or have access to the full package from this meeting. Will have among the documents there and interim city manager employment agreement between city Portola and John Kennedy. You will notice that there are several blanks. There throughout the document. And we need to first have a determination from the council members. Of what they will support to fill in those blanks. The first item is under a contract term four for the term of the contract, the length of the contract. The. Do we have a suggestion from council members as to what appropriate lifespan for the contract would be?
If everything is moving on, I think a period of two years?
We have a suggestion of a period of two years. So that would run until February twenty-third of twenty twenty-five. Agreed. Is there anyone opposed to that on the council? Okay. On the next page, under compensation, number five. The manager's initial base salary shall be some figure. We have a suggestion from council.
I think upon looking at and listening to things that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that is.
I think if I'm looking at um and listening to um things that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that is. Low even, but it is what some smaller cities like ours are, are paying to start.
Any other suggestions from council or are we in agreement?
We're in agreement.
Okay. Then moving back a little farther in the contract. Going back to twelve. Uh, the second item under twelve, which is termination of employment. And this agreement, the general release and severance associated with it. If manager is terminated without cause, this is a termination without cause. Manager will be provided with severance pay equal to two months of the base salary. Uh, in the uh extended year of the contract, that would be three months.
Agreed.
Is there agreement?
Yes, yes.
Thank you all. Let me ask now for a public comment on the. Terms and discussion on the employment contract for interim city manager. Between the city and John Kennedy. We're open for public comment.
Looks like Ashley Sims.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I actually wanted to know um why Mr. Kennedy is still being called interim. When it appears to be, I don't know, for a period longer than two years. Um, that, that part confuses me. I would. Also like to ask the council to please require that uh whoever. Um, is in charge of posting job openings. Um, post the position for a permanent city manager. Um. I, I think that the city should move forward with somebody who is more permanent and not. Not someone who is supposed to be interim and it feels like a, feels like a gray area. Um, I hope you can understand that with the, with the interim and. Being, meaning temporary and then his contract is extended for another two years, so that would be a total of three years. Um, so I would, I would like to ask the council to please require that the city manager job be posted and. Um, and that the city is actively taking applications for the city manager position. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment?
Uh, someone with a D.
Uh, thank you. I just want to urge the city council to. Uh, approve a two-year extension. I think that. The interim city manager has done an excellent job and I also feel like. There are citizens in our community that. Bog the city down with. Public records requests that just consume a lot of staff, time. And taxpayer money. And I don't understand why that happens. Um, it just impedes the progress. Of city government when people are doing superfluous. Public records request acts and I really feel like. The focus should be moving forward and not putting roadblocks in people's path. Um. It's, it's not easy what you, you people all do and when you have people that I, I think. Keeping an eye on things is good, but I think a lot of times. I don't know if it's a power trip or what, but it just seems like there are some people in our community that impede. The council and the city manager and I've never understood that. And I think it's counterproductive. They might think that they're helping and I'm sure in some cases. Keeping uh, they've probably pointed out things that have been helpful, but you really have to pick and choose. And, and not being an impediment. And I, I just. Have listened to a lot of things and uh over this past year. And I, I felt like there's a lot of instances where people are, are, are making themselves roadblocks. And there's just no need for that. Um. I want to thank every, everyone um that, that works for the city for, for doing their job. And doing it as best they can. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment on the matter of the interim city manager employment agreement?
Not seeing anymore.
We not, we will close public comment on the matter. Any uh comments from the council members?
I wanted to thank the ad hoc committee for uh giving this diligence they put into. Uh, studying rate severer counties uh where we needed to go. And what uh the purpose of the two-year contract was that it um allows. For actual getting our feet more firmly under us with uh. With John and uh then at some point we will go to uh to that search. But uh, this, this really serves us in the best possible way right now.
The other comments from council. Now the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the subject contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the employment agreement for interim city manager. For two years.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any last comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Cooley.
Yes. And with that, uh, we'll come to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Thank you for all your participation and comments.
Thank you. Good night, Portola.